Good evening and welcome to the town of Corde Madara Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 28. Please take a roll call.
Commissioner Kenny.
Here.
Commissioner Bush, Bush, Shoyer. Chair Chase.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bandell. That's it.
Absolutely. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we now always open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. People here in the room are not here to comment on that. So we'll see if there's something online.
None, Chair Chase.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment section for tonight's meeting and we'll go right to the consent calendar. This is something I don't believe we have to read. We can just adopt it by a voice vote. Is that correct? Okay, all right. So all in favor of adopting the resolution, continuing this practice of tele meetings. Say aye.
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 Okay. We've adopted the consent calendar item. So we're all here tonight to have a new hearing for 313 Corde Madara Town Center. This is titled as a major design review application for modifications to the existing retail space number three, one, three within the Corde Madara Town Center. This is Mr. Boyle who's going to present this tonight. I'm going to sort of say what I think we'll do here tonight. So we're familiar with it and Phil will make a presentation. The commission will ask questions of Phil. And then we'll turn it over to you guys to make your presentation. We'll ask questions of you. And then we'll open it up for public comment. We'll come back to the dais here and we'll probably, I anticipate, ask more questions of you within that public hearing format. And then we'll take it up here to review. At some point, we may come back to more questions with point we have to open it back up, but that's how we'll go about this. So, all right. Mr. Boyle.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Our PowerPoint presentation to come up to have overview of the staff report. So as Chair mentioned, application for you today is a major design review for exterior modifications to what's currently the existing Barnes and Noble bookstore. And it will be converted to an our, our house furniture store. And this is a major designer review because of the significant change to the exterior building. And the fact that this changed the exterior building is on the outside of the mall. We've had some significant changes to interior spaces in at both the town center and the village. And those are often done, almost always done at the staff level, but because of the the size and the significant change in this, this is coming to, to the planning commission for your review. So the project is located on the northeast corner of town center in the like pink color there again is the former Barnes and Noble. The project itself is not changing the square footage of the space, the square footage is remaining the same. It's just a major, you know, interior remodel and exterior remodel with some slight changes, but no significant changes to again, the square footage of the building. Just give you an overview of what's happening with the east elevation and that's facing highway 101. You have the Barnes and Noble store there at the top and the proposed our house building down below. And the main front door stays the same and the stairway stays the same. The ADA ramp to the left is being removed and being replaced by that portion sticking out and that is for exterior or furniture displays. And, and then to the right, that existing ADA ramp on, on right of the building that will remain as is. But as you can see, major changes to the, the front facade, much larger windows being installed and a completely new look to the building. And this is the mall interior look. This is where the elephant fountain is, you know, currently that's just sort of a fake facade above there. And this new one will also be a, a not a fake facade, a facade, but no, you know, actual activity is this is a single story building. So significant change again at this elevation and this elevation also matching the east elevation, very similar layout. And same, same sign location as well. Also want to point out that the, before the store, which has the title of four eyes to the bottom right. That tenant is staying there. However, the applicant and, and the mall have agreed to have that space altered and that, that front facade changed to be consistent and go, you know, coincide with our house layout. And so, so that I think if they didn't, you'd kind of have an unusual all by itself sticking, sticking out. I'm sure that the applicant and the mall representative Monte could probably speak more to that. But I just want to point that out that that is that retail space on the right is remaining the same. Again, very similar layout in terms of windows and awnings and then the decorative elements at the top of the building. As the, as to the east elevation. And now looking at back, back to the east elevation, but looking at the southern end. Just want to point out that the applicant has worked with the mall and has agreed to paint that thing is you referred to kind of as a utility area that built that area to the, to the left behind that large hedge. The hedge will stay. But the, the building will be painted a new roof and will fit in much better and to the our house building as well. So that's, that's not, that's not their space. They're not gaining any square footage. They've just made an agreement with the mall to improve that area as well. And then on the north end bordered or next to Creighton Barrel, you have this look again. I think in terms of tying this building into other buildings, you know, the Creighton door, Creighton Barrel building, which was put in several years ago. Again, has somewhat of a similar architectural feel in terms of the flat roof and more of a modern look. But this just gives you an angle from the, the northern end of the project. Here the exterior material, the exterior materials board, which describes which materials are going where. And as I pointed out earlier, there are samples that the applicant has provided for you to, to look at. And I think the applicant has some provide additional information on what these materials are and why they chose the ones they, they've chosen. Wanted to give you a comparison and a visual in terms of height. And so the existing Barnes and Noble is approximately 27 feet on the east elevation. And the proposed our house all the way to the top of the, the decorative elements, I'll call them will be approximately 27 feet as well. And so no change in height at this location or this elevation. The maximum height in the zoning district is 35 feet. And then similar for the building height in the western elevation in the interior. It's actually we being, it will be lower in the end. Currently it's approximately 33 feet. And the new facade will be 31 feet in height. I want to give you a sense of some of the other neighboring storefronts. Again, I mentioned Creighton Barrel. This is the container store. And an REI and Athletica, which is slightly to the north and then farther to the northern end of the shopping center is the Bay Club. Again, very relatively modern looking buildings. Before we go into signs, did you want to point out that, as I say in the staff report, all of the, the project meets all the requirements of both the Corde Madara, Corde Madara municipal code, as well as the town center design guidelines, which have provided you a copy of those. So I've gone through both the immunity code as well as the design guidelines. The shopping center has what has also, and it meets all those requirements for both of those documents. And in terms of the signs, there are specific requirements for signs. Both dictated by the municipal code and also by the center's design guidelines. And it talks about location, number of signs and square footage. Again, much, much more detail in the staff report, but it also, their proposal meets all of the requirements for, for signs. All signs will be illuminated. As also spell that in the staff report and also the plans show those. And there are be two signs per elevation. One above the main entrance way, which is the one on the left. And then the one on the right is for the east elevation, that'll be a small sign off to the right and to the west elevation. It's a small sign off to the left. All the signs combined equal approximately 39 square feet. And the maximum allowed is 100 square feet. So they're way, way under the allowed area of sign. And I did want to point out there, there weren't any responses to any of the the notices that were sent out. I believe a number of you had an opportunity to tour the site. Didn't receive any comments for or against the project from the public. And as you can see in the staff report, I was able to make all of the required findings for this designer review application. And with that, I would recommend the commission approve the draft resolution for this design review application. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Phil. Um, we will do just that and ask you questions from up here. So I'll start with Mr. Kenny over here. See what questions he has for you. Would you turn your microphone on over there? Yeah.
The drawings on the lighting are, are very hard to read without a magnifying glass. So I'm wondering how you determine the bug rating on the light fixtures?
Well, they provided them in the, and I spoke specifically with the applicant. And like I should point out in the staff report, the, um, the lighting that they are providing will be, will have meets the staff requirement for the bug rating. And the bug rating is the B U G, which is back lighting, up lighting and glare. And can they, they meet that requirement? And also if there are any changes or any alterations in lighting between now and the building permit, any, any lighting will have to meet that requirement as well. That will be reviewed by staff.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Valerie. You have any questions for Phil?
I do.
Give it a good press.
I can learn this. Is so. It does say that the building is exempt because it's an existing building or the project goes into the existing building. It's exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act. Are there any plans to upgrade the building since the it is a major renovation project and the tenant is going there, going to be there for a long term?
In terms of upgrading the, the building in terms of
To all electric, yeah, fixtures, yeah.
Yeah, I'll have the applicant discuss that. But they, they haven't, you know, the remodel itself, like I said, is, is a significant interior and exterior remodel. Specific upgrades all, I'm sure they can address any of those questions that you have.
I also have two additional questions. Is the building going to go since our house from my research is company that takes pride in sustainability? Is there going to be any lead for retail certification or well building certification for the project?
Okay, we can ask that of these guys when they get up there. But if you have any
Stuff, no.
things for Phil and his information, now's the time. So.
Okay, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rizzo.
Got just a few general questions. Phil, since we're not changing the square footage of the, of, of the project, I'm assuming that that's why we don't have to discuss the parking count of the center.
Correct.
And during construction, how do we determine how many parking spaces are allowed to be removed? During a major renovation, I know that when, when we went through the restoration hardware one, it was, you couldn't park there. It was a disaster. So is that something that you guys review or is it done with the building officials?
When we get to that phase. Both, both. We'll, we'll look at the, one of the conditions of approval is they need to provide a construction management plan. And so that will show staging areas for equipment that will show how many parking spaces are being taken up. I'm sure Monte, the manager of the shopping center will be closely watching that given he doesn't want to use any more parking spaces than he can. So that will be a joint effort and that will be part of the, the building permit review for construction and the construction management plan.
But we don't have any guidelines or anything. It's just sort of, they just propose something and then you kind of take a look at them.
Yes, yeah, I mean, the, the building, right. The building department has general guidelines, you know, minimize impact to neighbors, reduce and minimize number of parking spaces taken, that type of stuff.
Okay. And when I have another general, just a general question on the, the design guidelines for the center kind of specify that the, the town has a design review architect. Do we send this, these type of major things out to a designer review architect? Or is that an old?
That's a, that's a, that's more of an old reference to when maybe the, the town center still has an architect on staff and, and they, they work to create these guidelines and, and update the guidelines. And that's, I think that's the architect that the guidelines are referring to.
Okay, because it sounded like it was a town, it was a town representative or something like that.
No, these
You guys are totally qualified to do it. I was just curious because I, we haven't been, this product of this size hasn't come across.
Right.
Council since I've been on it.
Right.
All right. That's all I have for Phil. Thanks, Phil.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions to grill Mr. Boyle with. So we'll go directly to you guys and you can make a presentation. So I'm sure you have a plan for how, who's going to speak first and then who follows up. So if you would step up to the microphone and just make sure the microphone is on and carry forth.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commission. My name is Nikki and I am Nikki Edmiston and I am the director of real estate for our house furniture. Our house was founded in 1986 by Jack and John Reed, a father and son duo. And they based our house on a simple idea of beautiful furniture and decor sustainably resourced and built to last. Our part, we partner with artisans around the world who share our vision in creating beautiful furniture and heirloom quality pieces that will last for generations. Our artisans use sustainably resourced, reclaimed and recycled materials as much as possible, such as harvesting wood from mango trees that no longer produce fruit. Repurposing recycled copper and glass to locally sourcing parts for our domestically manufactured upholstery. With over 80 locations throughout the United States, we have many projects planned over the next couple of years and we're excited to continue sharing our brand with California. And we're thrilled to call Corde Madara part of the our house family, hopefully. And I thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Do you have any questions or do you want to wait till the end of the presentation?
Um, let's continue forth with your presentation and then we'll, we'll talk to all of you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, members of planning board. Thank you for your time this evening. I am Mark Pultorick, principal with RDL Architects. We've been doing our house furniture for over 30 years as their architect. And we've done close to, I think, 80 stores for them already to this point. We're going to move forward. There we go. As, as Phil originally indicated, we are taking over the corner of the existing Barnes and Noble space, which is almost 28,000 square feet. We will not be adding on any more square footage. The, uh, the way we're handling this is we're going to de-skin the existing facade. And then rebuild all brand new studs, exterior materials back within the lease line zone that's been set forth by the center. So that enables us to stay and work within the footprint, keep the parking ratios where they need to be. Our occupant loads so they can stay where they need to be. We, we split this up to make this a little larger for everybody to read and as you're looking at these plans, as you could see, these, these are basically construction documents to this point. We have, we have done the parallel review with, with the town of Corde Madara. We have now received our first set of review comments from the building department. And we're in the process of finalizing. We should be done by the end of next week, hopefully resubmitting those for the final permit application. We've had very minimal comments from the building department on this structure. So what you're looking at is the back half of the building, which is the, we'll call it the courtyard side, which will be de-skinned. The intent, all the ramps, we're not going to touch the ramps. We don't want to touch the planter beds that are there. We're going to carefully remove and replace the walls back in the plane that we need to place them in because we want to keep the way that whole center courtyard looks. It's a great architectural element and a gateway into our store. And we would hate to ruin that. The front half of the building, which is the parking lot side, which is the public side. Again, we will be de-skinning from roughly the right hand side, about halfway down on the crate side, which goes into a, an area that's blocked partly by hedges. There's a generator back there, but we wanted to get some verticality to it. Bring it around the front. Keep the existing handicap ramp that is active on the right hand side. That is the true handicap ramp for the building itself. So we want to maintain that and the existing concrete stairs. We're going to remove the old railings and put new, new railings on. Some of them are looking a little degraded and we want to upgrade it. The existing ramp to the left, we want to remove that ramp. It was more of just a pedestrian ramp. And keep the same footprint from the ramp that is there, but construct the raised pad that's going to become their outdoor patio area, which will house their outdoor furnishings. People can sit out there underneath the canopy area, enjoy the furnishings and have more of an outdoor feel. That ramp on the left is not needed for any ADA egressing points. We do cover the points with the existing ramp that we're maintaining. And we will continue the facade then down into the courtyard area, stopping once we get past the hedges and we'll de-skin the studs down to the point and then re-insulate to get our, our values up to meet the current energy codes. So this is our existing front facade. As Phil had indicated, we have the higher portals that are going up to add some verticality to the building. Add some architectural dimension to the building, open air, let the air go through. Uh, it's a combination of ACM panels, which are fire core, they are a hundred percent recycled materials. They require no maintenance, which they'll be able to reside in the building for as long as this tenant is there or beyond that point, which helps in carbon footprint from that point of having to replace materials and, and repair items. We have Corten Steel, which you've seen the sample. It is a pre-weathered eighth inch thick material that goes on a rain screen system. Going with the thinner system, it allows us to go with a lighter gauge metal stud, not having to add a lot of structural steel and to hold it up. It goes through 482 cycles in a, a manufacturing warehouse where it'll pre-weather it, pre-seal it. And when it hits the site, it won't have to patina anymore. It'll slowly patina to get a little bit darker, but it's pretty much well environmentally ready. And the ratio on that metal is, uh, they're saying 75 years before you even have a rust through. So again, it's another high grade product with long-term sustainability to the building, maintenance free. We also are proposing the Trespa Pure product, which they started off as a Netherlands company who expanded into the United States. They, they are full P E F C certified. They pride themselves on basically truck crate to building. They, they use recycled wood, trees, paper to create this product and they use a resin that actually helps bind it together to give it the laminated effect. Yet it is a low VOC product. It does meet California requirements for the product itself. We have used it in the past in California and it's currently going on 20 other projects that we're doing. Based on impact ratings, it's qualified to go in hurricane districts. So it's, it's pretty indestructible and very maintenance free, which is what we're trying to get across for our clients. So they don't have to maintain a building constantly, caulk a building, replace broken or rotted products. We, we want a building that's going to look good from the day that we built it up to the point that either they're gone or the, the center is going to go through a major re-haul. And then we also have stone that is going on the building, which is corded stone. It comes out of Wisconsin. It is a specific blend that gets pulled for our client. We've used it on close to 30 stores already. And we, we like it because of the rustic look to it, but it ties in the earth tone effects, which helps I think with the backdrop of this structure to fit into the town of Corde Madara with the earth tone colors. We feel that this structure works very well with the surrounding areas, keeping it very earth toned. We'll be reutilizing the same materials on the interior because we feel that we want both gateways to look very similar to each other. So anybody walking on the inside that comes in from that, they recognize that is our house furniture coming down the causeway. And they understand that that is the, that is the building to come in and shop. And as indicated, we will not be touching anything within the, the courtyard area with the pavers, fountain. All that is, will remain. If we have to peel back some of the brick to get the, the walls to come down and extend any foundations, that will be replaced back to its original piece. We have some construction wall sections for everyone to understand what was happening with the building. To go to a point that it was asked, will we be upgrading the building to meet the standards of current California codes? We are reconstructing anything that we're touching with the walls, the lighting. It will all meet the current California energy codes. We have continuous insulation on the exterior of the building as well as full in, in wall cavity insulation with inside of the wall cavities. Uh, all the interior lighting is LED. It is our lighting control systems. So we're, we will be maintaining Cal Green as we go through this piece. The comments that came back from the building department were very minimal on our energy code requirements we were meeting. We just have a few elements that we need to address with them based on our mechanical systems, showing the, the ratings that we're meeting with the water source systems. We did include in the package existing pictures of the existing structure and the surrounding areas. So everybody can get a feel of how the surrounding looked. What the building is going to do as it moves forward and the loading dock area. That will remain as is, we're not touching any of the shrubbery that is in front of that loading dock area that will remain. Uh, we feel that the live green wall should stay. It, and it does create a good blockade to it. If anything needs to be trimmed away, we will replace and put back so it looks as natural as it was. To the effect of the lighting, yes, we do understand it was very low to, to read small, trying to fit all that on the actual packages. It was hard. We did follow up with Phil with some additional information. We do work with a lighting designer as we set up these stores to help with their energy ratings to keep their costs down low. They did do some calculations on the actual foot candle levels for the lighting and the bug calculations on the actual foot candle levels for the lighting and the bug ratings and the pole, four poles that we're going to replace along the, uh, parking lot zone to upgrade those fixtures. They are all dimmable. Everything will be shut off by ten PM to meet the city standards of, uh, what the law states. Anything that is on the building that is washing the building does have adjustability to the optics and the angle of repose as it goes up. So by the time it hits the top of the building, you are at less than point zero three foot candles at the, at the topmost point of the building. And we can tip that in even farther if we need to. Dimmers can be added to even adjust it further if we need to. Lighting, the lighting, um, warmth, we are at three thousand Kelvin, which I believe is also one of the standards within the town of Corder Madera. So we are stating, we are going to maintain the three thousand Kelvins for the exterior lighting. The, the neon that you're seeing isn't really neon, it is LED lights. It will not be pink. That's just the product color page.
Oh damn.
Um, it, it will be a three thousand Calvin light and it's only used at the portal entries to kind of help draw you into where the main entry is. Uh, as you could see on this sheet, these are the new, um, pole lights that we want to add. If everybody's familiar with in front of Barnes, there are four globe lights that sit out front. The lenses are very yellowed, they're weathered and aged. We'd like to update them a little bit to be a more energy efficient LED light that does have dimming capabilities. It has shut offs and it's full bug rated. And, um, it will light the sidewalk up a little bit better, make the area safer. These, this just depicts, we did a, an actual electronic material board. It's harder to fly with stuff and trying to ship stuff is, is difficult. You do have all the samples that are going around. Too fast. We did include some nighttime shots of what, what the building will do when it is lit up. This is pretty close to the intent of what we're trying to achieve with the lighting and what the lighting designer has run with her calculations. Is there a laser on here, Phil?
There is not, unfortunately.
So the area, the area that you're seeing to the left. So that, that area down below that, that is an open air area to where they will have additional outdoor furniture, um, and some of their, what would you call it, Nikki? Kind of weather resistant furniture that would, that'll be out in that area. There is a skylight that sits over that zone. Inboard further will be indoor doors that create a, um, more of a greenhouse look. So you get an outdoor experience as you're walking by, you'll get a feel, you'll see the activity from the outside and hear what's going on. But then when you get deeper in, there is a set of window walls with doors that close it off to go back into the conditioned space. And this is the nighttime rendering of it. And that concludes the, uh, the presentation. Uh, one, one piece that, uh, Phil did ask was in regards to landscaping. We're going to, we would like to defer the landscaping element of the building to, so they can have proper time to hire a local landscape architect and landscape installer to put together a design package specifically for the front of this store to work with the town of Corder Madera and the center to enhance the building.
Okay. So at this moment, um, that's good information. That concludes what you want to say.
Yes, sir.
It does, alright. Does Monty want to make any presentation to us tonight?
Not necessarily.
Okay, please, yes.
Evening Commissioners, Monte Stevens, I'm the General Manager of Town Center. Been here for eight years, oversaw the renovation with this group. And I don't necessarily have anything to present, but I am here to answer questions, so that's all.
Great, good to know, thank you. Alright, so don't want it too far because somebody's going to have to stand back up with the microphone here. So I'm not sure who that will be.
I'll start.
Okay. So, um, over here on my right, we'll start with, uh, Daniel to ask you any questions, presuming he has questions for you.
Uh, have you looked into opportunities for putting solar on the roof? Given that your, um, your green initiative, uh, company value, this seems like it'd be a great opportunity to, to come through for Corder Madera with a, uh, PV, uh, solution.
We, we have not, uh, we have not used solar on any of the products. We, we have tried other areas of using energy resourceful pieces, but the uh, return on investment based on the timeline of leases, it never pans out cost-wise from that element. So that's why we go with lighting control systems that can either dim it out or with the amount of sunlight that comes in, it will, it will read that and will only allow lights on during certain parts of the day at the points where the sunlight is coming through and the areas are bright enough with the natural light, that some of the lights probably will not be on at that point.
So I guess this is a question then for Nikki, would you consider it in this case, it might be really a showcase for your company nationally?
Uh, to be quite honest, I don't know if we've, when we've explored it in the past, I have not been a part of, part of this department. So, um, more than happy to look into it with Mark to see if it's a possibility for us to move forward with.
Thank you.
The other challenge of that piece will be based on can the roof support it and what all is on physically on that roof based on being a multi-tenanted building with the office next to it and piping? Cause it is, it is a partially wood frame building. So we, we have to watch what deflection ratios are happening within that roof structure as well. So that, that'll be, that'll become a question to the, some of the structural analysis as well to the building itself.
Yeah, I understand.
Uh, I, I guess this is another question which I think is already been raised. Uh, any, any of the mechanical systems, the opportunities, given that you're gutting the interior and doing a major renovation to, uh, look at, uh, non-carbon. I don't know if the heat is provided throughout the whole center or your own heat and hot water, to make those systems, uh, electric?
The, or non-carbon? The, the system in the mall is a, it's a water source heat pump system that we're tying into. So it's a, it's a center system because of the four-story, um, building.
Please, yeah, I had.
It's, it's exciting news, actually. That boiler is state of the art and it was just installed less than four years ago and it's high efficiency. And I'm proud to say that, so it's a good system to tie into for sure.
And it, it covers more than this space. It functions to supply other areas of.
The, the three levels above and then any retailer below the office building as well.
So Daniel, I'm sorry I'm interjecting here, but that, uh, is the shell then part of center, uh, territory or roof, you know, property, uh, of this unit? So that you govern that, what goes on that roof or not?
I, I didn't quite understand that.
So in regards to solar, do you govern what goes on that roof or does?
We actually do, we would. And we looked at solar projects, I think we should probably really shelf that and let that be a landlord responsibility. Am I, because I think that you brought up a great point, Mark. With the, I can't, you know, talk about specifics, but that with the lease term that this operator is given, doesn't really make financial sense.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you. Alright, sorry, Daniel, go ahead.
Sure. And then, uh, what about hot water? Is that provided by, uh, by the, uh, by the mall? Yeah, the, um, as I understand it, uh, the signage on the mall side, the west side is the same size as on the one oh one east side?
Correct.
Uh, and I think design guidelines call for the signage to be, uh, smaller on the pedestrian side because you're not having to see it from one oh one. Uh, and I think there's some actual language in, in Phil's report that suggests that, the primary signs generally should be placed, you know, provide identity for vehicle traffic. But that, you know, uh, secondary sign should be addressed the pedestrian. So I guess I'd like to see smaller signs on the pedestrian wall. I don't, people are walking, they're not traveling at, well, if it's legal fifty-five or probably more likely if you've been on one oh one lately, more like seventy-five. That's one thing. Also, I think, uh, the same thing goes, uh, I think for the scale, uh, on the west side. Even though the building is two feet shorter, um, I think the way the design is, particularly the, the arch forms, is certainly a different scale than you would expect in a pedestrian setting. So if there would be some consideration of trying to, to change that scale a little bit, I think that would be more consistent with the guidelines and with the other architecture in the mall itself.
We can actually, uh, uh, address that, Dan. There, there is a, Tracy, if you want to bring up that second option.
Is it the PowerPoint, Mark?
Uh, no, it's, I think it's just a, uh, it should be just.
Option, yeah. Option B?
Yes, sir.
I brought the clicker again. Thank you.
So we, we were forward thinking this. So we, we did study an option with lowering the, the end caps on both elevations and just allowing the front element to be a little bit taller, which still gives us a little bit of play on the, the elevations and but still pronounces the front entry of where it needs to be.
Yeah, I.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have one for the interior side?
We do, it's like clicking really slow here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it from here.
Again. So we, we opted for this one, everything, everything to the left, we've, we kept low. What's sitting to the right where the our house main sign is, that is matching the heights of the existing building parapet of the, uh, tenant that is next to us. So we, we would like to try to maintain that one at the height, but this was another study looking at lowering the, the parapet heights, but still maintaining the architectural design.
Thank you for looking at that and personally, I think that helps my, my concern. Now the, while you're there, that picture, what's that outdoor space now for the furniture display? Is that interior space today?
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, the report mentions energy efficient glazing, can you speak to that?
We, um, the, the system we use, it's a, it's by guardian glass. It's, it's a clear glass, but it has a, they call it an SN, SN sixty-seven, um, low E coating on it, which drives the, the solar heat gain down and the, uh, U factors down. So everything we're putting in here will be a high efficient, one inch thick, uh, one inch insulated system. So you have two pieces of quarter inch glass argon filled inside with a low E coating on it. It is, it is currently passing the, uh, the energy code by a very large margin. The building department has approved the actual energy code that we've put through.
One more question for now, which is, uh, and this, uh, might also be for you, Monty, but uh, four eyes and the office tenants above, are they, have they been consulted or are they, uh, uh, comfortable with this change to the elevation outside?
Uh, great question, thanks for asking. Phil or Adam, can't recall, suggested that I send these drawings out prior to this and I sent them out about three weeks ago. We only got one comment, um, and it was, um, it was just basically, we love that, can't wait to see them come. But yeah, everyone's been notified.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Don't worry, no.
No.
Right away, right.
Alright, um, well, thank you so much for the presentation. So thank you for answering all of the questions. So I'll go back to, uh, my lead question specifically, you already answered no previously. But I wanted to ask what, if you would consider to revise that decision due to the fact that you're already kind of using a lot of sustainable materials in your project as well as your kind of mission and vision, uh, of the company is, um, to use the recycled materials. So it just would kind of make sense to go, to go above and beyond to prove your statement, um, and the mission, um, as a company. So I wanted to just see if you would consider revising the decision on having the lead, uh, for retail certification for your project.
From my end, I, I can't, I can't approve that for our house and that would have to go fully up to the, uh, the owner of the company at that point. We've, we've never gone for any type of lead certification on the buildings. We, we drive the buildings to be as energy efficient as we possibly can.
Should be easy one.
It, it, it is to a point and then it, it becomes, and I hate to use the word cost thing to do it because every time you, you put a lead certification of something, it's thirty-six thousand dollars for lead certificate or fifty thousand dollars for the gold certificate and, but.
It's quiet.
It, but it's, it's not out of the question, but I don't want to, I don't want to pigeonhole the design on if it goes fully up the, the chain and they say no.
I'm fully prepared to take it back to our internal people to see if it's something we can explore.
Thank you, yeah.
I, I just don't know what's involved with becoming, um, lead, so more research on my end is needed.
Just a lot of paperwork.
It would be a great example for other tenants as well.
But it is, it is, it is doable.
Okay.
Alright, so then a couple of other questions that I have. So on the design things, so I've noticed that your north side elevation, um, and then west side elevation, they are slightly different material application and there is no consistency in between them. Uh, so I would, I would like to ask whether or not you would consider to keep it a little bit more consistent. For instance, in this elevation specifically, you're applying the metal underside of this wood siding, whereas on the north side of elevation, you're applying, you're kind of having a different pattern of application between the metal and the wood, which is inconsistent as well as the height of the, uh, metal cladded steel members is inconsistent as well. Um, also I would love to hear the design concept and understand, um, uh, what is your rhythmic decision here? Because the members are not the same width. Uh, so I would just like to understand what was driving the concept and decision behind that.
But we, we like to play of large to small. I think, I think building architects should be fun. It should be playful, not just stagnant and just one, one size goes across an entire building. It's, it's a piece of art and there's no, no one art piece is the same. And that's, that's the fun thing about being an architect. You, you get to have fun, you get the design, you get to create new, new looking items. The, for the formwork going around the, the window areas, those all, the, the widths of those are a little smaller than what happens around the big main entry. Cause obviously we want to, we want to enhance the main entry because the main entry is the main entry. But rhyme or reason, there is really no rhyme or reason. It's, it's, it's having fun with a building and create, creating just a fun rhythmic pattern of different sizes.
And did you consider the obstruction that you have into the building behind it? Um, the previous building for Barnes and Noble was a little bit more layered. It was a little bit lower, so you kind of could see multiple buildings layering in height. And right now I feel like the, especially this facade is closing it that off a little bit. Um, so you're kind of losing the perception of multiple buildings behind it.
I was going to add that we actually have a large bamboo shield behind the second floor tenants, but I don't think that's exactly what you're referring to.
Yeah, if you flip to the other, uh, elevation, yeah, this one specifically. Yeah, if you flip to the other elevation, yeah, this one specifically. So here you can see kind of the layers of the building exposing nicely, whereas the current design of the facade is closing that off. I thought it was a nice touch and kind of showcasing the town center.
What's that? I I, when you back up farther, you will still see the office buildings better, because it is a, I think it's a four story office building. I just, from from the design end, and I mean, obviously, everybody has an opinion on design, because it's that that's the beauty. You have to have thick skin in this industry. That I, I like the verticality and the nice just level approach going across the building. If we start lowering it, I think it takes away from some of the actual metal panels and the the elegance of the structure itself. The the layering worked well with slope mansard roofs and everything, but when you go into more of a, an architectural design style of this, I feel that it wants to, it wants to plane out and still stay somewhat level.
All right. Then my other question is in regards to the integration with the community. So you did mention that you are opening some of the outdoor furniture spaces, specifically the one that is on the left and on the other side as well. But I would like to ask if you have considered any design strategy piece that would have more of the community participation within the store, just beyond the typical retail experience. And what I mean by that specifically is creating spaces that will be accessed by the community after hours, for instance, or perhaps a little shop, you know, a coffee shop inside. I don't know. I'm just making things up right now, but something that will integrate the community and neighborhood a little bit more. And the reason I'm asking, because the current Barnes and Noble use currently obviously has multifunction, you know, you often see families with kids there reading the books and there is a little shop there with the food shop there inside as well. So it provides multiple uses to the community, whereas right now you are kind of moving towards the solo application. So I was wondering if you are considering some of these like new trend strategies that are currently in the market for the retail in the community.
Thank you for your question. We are actually exploring a coffee shop inside our showrooms. It's still in the very early stages. It may be something that we we can integrate into this location, but there's still a lot of planning that still needs to be done. But aside from that, typically our outdoor spaces, if there's, you know, restaurants nearby, they're usually used while people are waiting for a table, and they're very open to the to the public. I think with this particular situation, because that curved ramp is already raised, I think it's just going to lend itself to being separate. Not that we intend it to be that way. There, everybody is more than welcome to to explore and sit on furniture. We want them to do that.
So would you consider opening it up, maybe perhaps not from this side, but from the other side to be open to the public to because right now the town center does have some outdoor furniture, maybe it can extend and be a little bit more open so people can use it after hours.
We could, we could possibly cut it open here.
Absolutely. We do that in a lot of locations. We I'm sorry, like a soft seating area throughout the mall where our furniture is used and we set up vignettes and we switch them out every so often. If we're allowed that space, we will definitely fill it with furniture.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Billy. All right, Mr. Rizzo.
Wow, a lot of stuff's been covered already.
Well, I I'm actually glad I I didn't pick up that that was outside. Oh, sorry. I, you know, I, I'm, one of my comments was just about pedestrian scale of of the west side, and and I didn't pick up that that was outside that furniture. So it kind of, you know, with lowering those, those, I'm calling it a reverse U, unless you have a term for it. You know, really helps out with that, with making it a little bit more pedestrian scale. But anyway, back to questions, I can comment later.
Please, question.
You said that you guys are opening up several stores in the near future. Is this sort of a a new brand strategy that you're going for, or are all the stores a little bit different? Because when we were researching online, it seemed like most of your stores had different flavors around the country.
They, we use some of the same materials, but the play in how these things go together, they're all different. That's that's the beauty of their store. They're they're very eclectic. There's no such thing as a prototypical store with them. Each each store is a different experience. So if if you go down to the one in Walnut Creek, you're going to have a totally different experience. You you go to Boston, Massachusetts, you're going to have a totally different experience. They're, none of them are alike.
So what was the inspiration for the use and the, you know, seeing through the top part of it?
To me, it just, it it, it gives me verticality, but you can still see the sky. And it allows a parapet to reside, but then takes the building up a little bit higher.
Got it. And then on on the on the west elevation, no, east elevation, facing the highway, would you mind putting that back up? What was the inspiration for the for the outdoor spaces canopy? It's a very organic shape where most everything else is is very rigid and rectangular.
Based on the fact that the existing, I guess patio area or ramp area was curvilinear and soft, we wanted to maintain that going up into the, into the actual canopy itself. So it it kind of sets that element as its own little element out in front of the building as almost like a little pavilion or it did, little, little different element to the whole structure itself. Because putting a square, a square, it's like a square peg in a round hole, where I thought the softer curves over, over the soft curved patio felt a little more comfortable through our design studies.
And you've already answered landscaping. It sounds like you're going to hire some local to and any idea what kind of roofing material you're going to be using? It sounds like you guys are deep into CDs. Is it a TPL roof? Is it going to be reflective?
The only thing we will be doing is patching in from the existing, the existing roof up onto our new parapet zones. This, the whole, the roof is existing up there already. We're not going deep into the whole, into the whole roof at this point.
Okay. But isn't that a big hip roof? How?
We're building over that.
Okay, so you're going to leave the roof and just build right on top of it?
Correct. We're just gonna, we're gonna take the clay tiles off and just basically build on top of that. So we're not, we're not ripping the whole building apart.
So the the roof on either side, is that going to be new? Are you building up?
Correct. There's a wall section on the, in the main presentation, Phil.
So this would be existing, and then they're just building over that slope roof that you see in front. So that's like a false slope roof that's there. It's not a real slope roof system. It's just a, something to see from the
Correct.
street, right? And the rest of the roof drops to flat behind that. Yeah.
Okay, so the ceiling height's going to be consistent on the inside then? And and okay, okay.
All right. It was less deconstructive to the building by doing that, and we're trying to keep all the tension in the building, just because it is partially wood framed. As a recommendation as a structural engineer.
Sounds, sounds complicated. Trying to tie in, I mean, I'm just thinking about my construction hat. I don't like, that sounds complicated. Bestion scale. I think as far as the rest of the questions, I I think the rest of the commissioners did a really good job of that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fresh out of ideas here to ask you, because these guys have brought a lot of questions to the table. I think that, you know, you've answered the question about why this design in this place, and that is your prerogative to bring this to the town center, right? As vertical element, it doesn't relate to other stores, our house stores particularly, just only in material composition, but in examining other storefronts, I couldn't find a relatable design. I didn't look for too many, but a few. So there, it's different. You chose to go vertical out in front at this location.
Correct.
Is that for visibility from the highway or just creating that appearance?
It's just creating the appearance, and it just, it's a different look. It's crate is fairly tall, so we want to, we want to play with crate, but obviously crate is still bigger than us. And we are shorter than crate, so we we still want to have some verticality next to crate, because I mean, it's twenty eight thousand square feet worth of sales area.
Right, right.
And it's a junior box in the retail world.
I don't know if somebody online will be asking this, but it seems like Town Center will now have the furniture world covered from Scandinavian design to what you provide, to what Anthem provides, to whatever else is there, and then competition across the street. So it's, it's all here in Cora Madera. There's almost a intention here to cover the furniture bandwidth of sales.
That is a very strong category for us, and that's one of the main reasons. It's only second behind our food. So that helps.
Okay. Thank you. I think that we'll probably discuss some things. I have some statements to make about these elements that have been brought before us when we consider it up here. I think that in the past, we've talked about solar on the buildings, and there's a problem with tenancy, and that you guys actually control the overarching building element. Tenants can't really chime into that very well, you know, without, as they say, major cost to them, which is prohibitive in a way. So okay, all right. Anything else you guys want to say at this point before we go to public comment?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Tracy, is there anybody wanting to speak online?
No, there's not.
Can you get somebody?
There is one attendee who has not raised their hand.
Well, with that said, we'll bring it right back up here to talk amongst ourselves, and we'll make our public comments. All right. Thank you. All right. So I I have a sense that the commissioners have a lot to say about this. So I'll start with you, Mr. Kenny, again. I don't usually do everybody in the same order, but tonight I am, so.
Picking on me, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I have, I do have one more question for the applicant, which is, since I hadn't realized that the outdoor space on the mall side, you were creating that outdoor space and the drawing showed planters there. And building along Commissioner Valerie's comments about the community, I'm wondering if if it would work for you if if the planters weren't there, so that space were kind of felt more open and almost a part of the mall, and if you're concerned about security, there could potentially be security grills that come down to secure that at night.
The, the trick to that back area, if everybody's been to that back courtyard area, everything along that whole area, the floor slabs up, everything, the courtyard's down, and along coming up the side of it is a ramp. So to remove the planters, then we basically remove guardrails and everything. They're already in place to basically keep the forty two inches so someone doesn't fall over the edge. That that's why we maintain the planters that were, that were already there, because it's all part of the raised sidewalk system that was built back when the whole interior mall courtyard was built.
Okay, thank you. I guess it still seems to me there's some open issues, and I I'm not quite sure how how we would address those.
We'll throw them out there and we'll keep.
Okay, so, so I think, you know, we were illustrated with a option that changed the scale on the mall side a little bit. And also, I've raised the issue of a smaller sign pedestrian oriented, you know, just scaled down. And I'm still not totally giving up on the solar panels. You know, if the payback on the lease doesn't work, then maybe maybe the mall, because if you go to re-lease the space later, that's a, that's a benefit to the tenant coming in. So maybe between the two of you, you could figure out how to make that work, or at least come back to us and demonstrate that it can't work.
Keep it in the right court. Really, this is in our court, and we've had several studies done. It's actually not their roof that we're looking at. It's all of Safeway. Safeway's roof is a prime solar location. I have a couple of different proposals, actually, and that would be something that would be, I would have to bring into the planning commission separately.
So it's out of this application is essentially. So but it's something that staff can keep after Monty, and we can keep after Monty to do that, right? But
Maybe it's twenty six thousand square feet of potential solar panels, so appreciate Safeway.
No, it, yeah, it's not that much roof space, but there is plenty.
Okay. So I I guess that's what I would say is some of the open issues.
Do you have any other discussive points that you want to make?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Good. All right, then, Valerie, your turn to throw something on the table.
All right. So open issue for me is to understand, so I appreciate you explaining about the vertical members and where the design came from. I do have an issue with application on the other side, so I, again, vertical members can work with the some scale modification than what Dan is suggesting. However, from the other side, I believe that applying the material between the metal and the wood siding in a horizontal manner really shortens your motivation for the vertical member, so it actually brings the building down a little bit, and it looks out of the proportion, especially next to the application over the I store. So I wonder if you would consider, you know, revising or matching perhaps the other side of the building to have a little bit more consistency in that, because again, like you are striving to get that verticality, but then you're using a very strong contrast between two light materials and dark materials with a different application there. Just kind of my opinion on the facade specifically.
I agree with her assessment. I think the these should match the front. Oh, this is like a full panel, full, you know what I mean, full truss, full, or ten, full truss.
We don't ordinarily sort of function this way, but it's fine. I want to let her finish, and then we'll come back to you guys with some of this. That's all right. No, I appreciate you coming to the table with that, so. She's going to express these things, as will Jim, as will I, and then we'll come back to you and talk some more. All right. Thank you. Keep a running list.
All right. So that's one of the open issues that I would love to discuss. And then the again, the community outreach, I again appreciate our house stepping in and saying that typically the outdoor space is accessed by public. There is supposedly going to be a coffee shop. We would love to see that being implemented into this location. I do have concern that it's still a public space that needs to be entered through the front of the doors of the store and not necessarily kind of sneak in, enjoy the space and leave. So it's still, you need to go to the store in order to enjoy the area.
Okay. All right. So those are your points. All right. We'll take note of those.
And lead, yes, lead certification.
Okay, not not to be missed, right?
Not to be missed.
All right. Mr. Rizzo.
So the signs are exactly the same on the back and the front.
Yes.
And on the, on the back, on the backside, the and and the composite material are broken up. Yet, that, you know, maybe that sign looks big Because it's, it's got, you got two more, two materials because on the other side, it doesn't appear to be as, as big. Because you, you know, your backdrop here is, is smaller. Is the width of these doors the same on the front as in the back?
Yes, they're, they're both identical elements.
Sorry. And you know, I, I kind of uh, agree with, with Valerie that um you know, about the size of the openings. I mean, I think that there is some sort of a, you have a great composition. But for some reason it I think maybe what's throwing me off is, is uh is the repetition. Like I feel like the, where your signs are, are the corotin and where you don't have the sign, you do the composite material and maybe it would come together a little bit better for me as a composition. If you look at the backside, uh, again, you know, I thought it looks like if that, where, under where the R has sign is and you, you, the lower one, if you would show the lower one, please. With the lower, fill the lower use. I find that to be a little bit more in kind with that pedestrian aspect of the guidelines. Yeah, we all are. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, like, I'm starting to really like the whole outside piece and, and I understand there's complications with, with opening it up and I could go either way with that. I think it's, it's kind of neat that that it's outside and I didn't pick it up. I can't believe that. I read drawings every day. But the, you know, I, I feel like the, where the signage is, it, it really brings you in. If it's differentiated up, above it with the corotin going all the way up as it does on the other side. And on the other side, you have two signs which both have corotin on it. And I would sort of recommend or, or if you, we would consider that as a composition is where you don't, if you can pop to the other side again, real quick. Bill, sorry. Yeah, you could kind of see like the core ten over the left hand side to me just feels like it's thrown in there. Whereas if it was the composite material on the left, left, then it would, you know, the signage kind of ties in with the facade a little bit better and, and brings you into, into the space. I think it would, it would make my eye feel a little bit better about the composition. Um, I do appreciate the fact that um it's Mark, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I appreciate Mark came, came to us with it, with a different um you know, composition, uh, I should scale of the upside down use, I'm calling it. But I, I could start making sense of it with the corotin and, and the signage because the, 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 where the, where the, where the secondary sign is on the right hand side, it bothered me that it was a different sized window. But it wouldn't bother me as much as if it was, it was separated by the fact that it had corotin above it. So I feel like that composition works a little bit better and I like the fact that it steps down because it ties into the other buildings a little bit better. I also feel like, you know, it's hard to tell the scale of this building because it is up about four feet from the ground. And we have been measuring the twenty seven feet from the sidewalk, which you know, the building itself is, is kind of elevated on a pedestal. Um, so it might not read as massive. You know, as you're walking past it. So I mean, I, I think if, if, if you would take consideration of some of those things I was, I was mentioning, I think it might to me, make a, the composition a little bit more pleasing to, to my eye, but I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that. And you know, some of the findings I had, I had problems with um, with the pedestrian scale and zone four. Um, I feel like that's kind of been addressed with the fact that you do have a, that, that's going to read a little bit with a lot of layers with the outside space. I, I can appreciate that. The only, the last thing I have to say, if we can go to the back, again, to the back courtyard for a second. I personally think by adding that U shape thing to the, your eyes actually takes away from the design. To me, it's, and I must want it to go away, like, you know, take, carry the stone over it and don't put the U there and like I don't know how to resolve it. You know, you're the architect, but it just seems to me like um, it's forced, whereas in it's, you've got a really nice composition to the left, really nice entrance. And then we kind of put this U shape thing to try to, you know, I don't know why. I mean, anyway. Unless the center's got a, another plan for that space, if it's eventually going to be taken over by your firm, by your company. Monte, what you're feeling, uh, what you're feeling about that, like maybe not doing anything over there or doing something separate, different, something? If it comes its own piece.
I'm, I'm going to ask, interject, is that in front of an existing structure there? So uh, the if you didn't turn those up higher, that you'd be left with an existing structure above that uh lowered upside down you? Know what I'm saying?
Those are two uh, existing office tenants above four eyes. And we um, went through this quite a bit with our uh, design team five oh five, as did Mark. What's with five oh five? We actually really liked the idea to be able to incorporate the entire uh, stretch over to four eyes. And we've already discussed this with. So I, I'm actually in favor for it personally.
To, to interject on that, Mr. Chase, we, we did work probably for two and a half, three months with five oh five, which is the center's architect, which is mentioned in your guidelines. And the original design was going with uh, with Mr. Rizzo was indicating coming up with just a stone piece and five oh five, who's the center's architect, recommended bringing it over top of four eyes. So it, it tied that element, but leave the four eyes tenant alone because they go horizontally across the sidewalk level, even underneath that archway.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, i- if it does stay, I mean, I could I'd rather see that as the composite material again, um, on both of those. And then you take the corotin up uh, below the sign. So that so the corotin is, is defining your, your, your entrance space. And then that becomes a secondary kind of thing. Cause I, I just feel like there's three things going on there and there's a lot of stuff going on, but it's trying to get tied in together. We, could that be a consideration to just?
I'm, I'm in agreement with keeping going wood on both of those office area windows, core ten where the sign is. And then the three elements on the angle, we will go with all trespass and then go core ten on the corner where the other sign is. I, I'm, I'm good with doing that and then eliminating the core ten on that other elevation where you wanted it above the patio. I'm, I'm okay with that.
And I wouldn't interject here. I'm sorry. I would also consider the height uh, above the sign as well for the cladded uh, metal member, just because again, it's out of the place a little bit again in the guidelines for the town center does uh, suggest to have the well-integrated details with the rest of the facade and intentions to be, to create a harmonious effect. And I feel like it's just it does stand out a lot. Just because you have the backing um, on be right before the four I and then the, you know, the next one where the offices are, you do have the backing, you don't have the opening. And then the angled version, right? The openings are much shorter. So that right above the sign becomes really out of the proportion there. So definitely, um, we would love to see the revision on that.
Yeah, so um, I'm going to interject here, interrupt everybody here. So when you go to the existing building there, uh, Phil uh, on the backside. There. So the height of that existing building is as height as they've dawned the arches. So um you have to do something with that facade. And what they did was continue those arches across that existing facade. If you don't have them that high, then you have a problem with um that facade sticking up above the arches. Right? So if you kept all the arches low, you'd have that problem of those, the existing building sticking up above the arches. That's what I'm understanding, everybody.
Yes, I, I agree with you. Yeah.
So.
In that case.
I was gonna say.
No, in, in that case, it doesn't bother me because I think if, if you were to drop that down a little bit, then you're, you're going to have three levels there. Right?
How would you feel if we brought? We have the low art, the, the low upside down use, you're calling it, use the top datum of that lower upside down you that's to the left, bring that straight across and use that as the datum into that piece and bring the core ten just at the sign element up to that point. Then we, it's like we have the higher opening mimicking the front of the, the same facade elevation, but it's it's going to create a higher backdrop for the signage at that point.
I think that would be a great solution.
We can, we can do that and it still keeps consistency and, and to your point.
Okay.
With the verticality. We can do that.
All right. So we got off on an agent there, but worthwhile. So um Mr. Rizzo, uh, continue there with your.
Oh, you know, I, I'm, I, I'm for either way, to be honest with you. I, you could relate to either side of it. Um, depending on Commissioner Valerie, you know, really feels about it. To me, you can go either way. You know, leaving it high kind of brings you into the most special place, which is the entrance. Uh, leaving it low kind of brings it down to a, to a more of a pedestrian scale. But definitely uh, using the material, I think, uh, the consistency on the, on the two right hand upside down use is going to really help, I think, the composition. Composition, so. Is there a reason, uh, Mark, that, that on this particular side that you guys did the corotin and the composite material and then on, on, on the freeway side, you did not? Was it trying, because you were trying to break down the, the scale of?
It was, it was more of a pedestrian thing to break down the, the wall mass scales to. But I, I can see both, both points, what you guys are bringing up and how I'm looking at it. So I said, that's the beauty of architecture. It's, everybody has a.
I would love to hear some comments from the other commissioners on it, if they feel that, that you like it broken up or not, or I just like the the full height torque, a quartet behind just the signage because that makes it special. But as far as those other elements, whatever it is, that they should be consistent with, with whatever everybody else kind of.
Yeah, I agree. That's what I was suggesting earlier is to swap, to make sure that the verticality members are more uh, uh, much stronger than breaking them up with the darker contrast.
Okay. That's all, Jim? For the moment?
I, I think that's it. Thank you very much, Peter.
Um, I think uh these issues about signage are something we have to discuss. Uh, the solar stuff we can revisit, but I think that uh, it's incumbent upon the center to figure out how to go solar. It's coming in one way or another, that it's just got to be a part of everybody's program. So um, I don't know how we can create something for uh, staff to pursue that um, in with these guys down the road. Um, I just don't know what tool that is or what you use to keep after that ever. It's a challenge.
Yes, it's certainly something perhaps our new climate adaptation director, complete title, Phoebe, Phoebe's new position is working with our climate action plan and our climate action committee. And working on a reach code as well, as you probably heard about, you know, we have a reach code for new um, single family dwellings need to be a hundred percent electric and they're thinking about later this year, a reach code that will require um, significant residential remodels to um, have more electric components within them. So this is all in, I would say, in the realm of that committee and, and that staff person. Um, if we wanted to have some type of requirement for solar on non-residential projects based upon square footage, based upon the size of project, um, variety of different ways to go there.
Okay. So when it comes to uh, commercial properties and going all electric, that's a different animal, but um would she be able to uh, form, formulate something or is that in her scope of work to do that for commercial properties?
I, I don't think, you know, that the county of Marin is kind of leading that charge and Fairfax and San Selm will have are ahead of us with the residential electric. I don't think commercial electric is actually, actually it is, there is, there is a component of brand new commercial buildings also being a hundred percent electric because I know restaurants could be exempt. Um, so that is, that is being talked about. I can't say exactly where we are in terms of when that will happen in Cora Madera.
Right, okay. Uh, thank you. Um, when it comes to uh, landscape around the center uh, and around town, we've had past issues with landscaping, but um uh, Monte, I trust that you'll uh, come back to this applicant or to the staff with some kind of landscape plan. So that means that you're making that uh, promise to come back to staff with a landscape plan. That's uh, something that is not really in the application, right? So.
Right, as, as, as I mentioned in the staff report, there's um, you know, there's, there's proposed landscaping alterations to the front here and that um, the hedge, hedge area to the right where the ramp remains that those um, small hedges will remain. And they're proposing these um, five five or so potted trees. And then what Mark was talking about, I think, maybe not exclusively, but he was talking about um, on the left area, the rounded an outdoor area, that is a landscape element that he's going to delve into more, you know, more deeply.
Okay, so it's referred to, but it's not explicit within this document, right? That what's going to happen out there?
Right, we're, we want to, we want to come back with what they would like to do, working with the center and everybody around this building at this point. It, it's a graphical depiction. But that's why we want to work with a local local landscape architect and installer to put together an actual presentation plan for you guys as a separate element to this building.
Okay. That presents sort of a dilemma, right? And then um and when we did floors out there, there was a indication that there would be a development on the landscape out there. Um, but we need something concrete. It either means that they, it's taken back to staff for staff approval. For this, we could put that condition in here, I think, but it does, it would be then staff approval for this, I think.
Yes, you can, yeah, the, the commission can decide either, either way, if they want landscaping to, to be just done by staff or they want landscaping to come back to you, that's, that's your prerogative. You have a number of, a number of issues you've, you've listed, um, number of changes you'd like to see in the design. And it's up to the commission how, um, whether those changes come back to you, whether those, all the changes come back to you, all the changes come back to staff or somewhere in between.
Right. Okay. So uh, I'm going to go back to, I think where we are and summarize a couple of these things that we want to talk about and we'll see um how the commissioners stack up with this stuff. So um, we've got design option B in front of us. And I think everybody up here is in favor of design option B, fair to say, right? As opposed to the facade, right? So we could say that this would be approvable with design option B, if we were to approve it. We would put that as a statement in there. Oh, for both facades, yeah.
Yes. We suggested a lot of changes to the.
That's separate. I'm just talking about, yes, we would incorporate some of these other comments into the uh, what happens with the cladding and so forth in there, but the lowered upside down use essentially are the basis of option B, right? So.
When stated like that, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. We've got um this, the solar thing we've talked about, uh, to the extent that I, I feel like um, we have to let staff drive that and we have to let Monte drive that. Are you guys in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The materials application are something we can, we can call out here a little bit more specifically and state that as part of what happens to these drawings, right? And that would be something that you would bring back as a representation to staff based on our commentary, right? And we'd let staff then say, yes, that matches what the commission has stated, right? You guys okay with that?
I, I guess I have a question since uh, I just, I don't think it's come up since I've been on the commission. Uh, if we were to ask for revised drawings, not necessarily that the applicant and uh owner has to be here, but we talked a lot on the, on the mall side about things that you can say this should be that and this should be that, but seeing what they actually do. There's the question of lead commercial, which they said they would explore and get back to us.
Right, that's another subject.
So, so I just wonder if, if. Some of these things they could get back to us, that rather than leaving them to staff and whether they actually have to be here. Uh, or not.
Well, what happens is that we either, uh, condition the application as we see fit tonight. And they go forth and come back to staff with all of this stuff, or the hearing gets continued. And then we have to get it scheduled for another date with new materials brought before us. So they don't walk away with approval or the ability to proceed until we do that. If we give them a conditional approval, um, they can get that to staff, they, staff can send it to us and do whatever, um. We can make comments to staff at that point. Online, but, you know, they're, they're in a holding pattern until we give them a conditional approval. And, and we'd have to continue the meeting to another time.
Why, why don't you just go ahead then, Peter, whether?
So, I'm sorry, say again?
Why don't you just go ahead then with the other issues?
Okay.
See where we land.
Um, so, uh. And that, that applies also to, um, the, uh. Specificity, specificity of the access to this community area in front. And maybe creating a walkway there to that area. From the front entry to the store, or is that internal only, or is that an exterior walkway?
What's that? There, there is a big rise going in there, going, getting actual, uh, foot traffic in there is gonna be hard coming off that side element. It's kind of an interior point, I mean, we can. I know we, we talked about studying using some of the outdoor area or. In, in your common area for furniture or.
Yeah, they're just talking about this, I guess they're talking about this space between the two, uh, Phil, could you pull up the floor plan? Yeah, we're talking about, uh, here, right, in the front, right, that there needs to be some sort of connection there.
Hmm, yeah, it would be nice if they open up this.
Yeah, I was referring to the front of the store, yeah.
Yeah, where the large, where that.
All that is, yeah.
Where the rounded canopy is, that, that's where it's gonna be more difficult to get up in there, just because of where the steel column sits.
I see.
The whole that, and it's getting to a pinch point with wheelchair access and everything, that's why we.
Okay, so what that becomes then is simply a store hours access, right, that is what that is. Um, that if the store's open, it's accessible.
Correct.
Right, okay, and the same would be true at the back area.
Too big of an area.
That, um, it's accessible if the store is open.
Correct.
Right, and the store is gonna be open ten to nine every day.
Correct, and, and I guess. As Nikki was indicating, and Monty is amendable. Where we could, we can actually do an area outside in that large courtyard area where the elephant and all that is, it's basically wide open. They can create a, a public area using their furniture and everything as well to use, and. When the store is closed for functionality.
Okay, so. Um. I don't know quite how to, um. Uh, couch it, other than to say, ask the other commissioners if that, uh. Is okay with them, to have that accessible during business hours. Is that, that, there's no requirement for people to be buying furniture, they can walk in and go sit down out there, right? According to you. It's usable space. So, that's the community, uh, a- access element, right? That we've been brought to look at, okay.
Um, I guess, Kevin Chase, I could just interrupt, perhaps this would expedite things, or maybe not, so our next meeting is March fourteenth. Right? Um, and so that would, if, if, if you chose to continue this meeting, um, you could continue it to, um, March fourteenth. There would be no more noticing required, we wouldn't have to notice again. And realistically, um, they would probably get, if, if you approved it. They would probably get approved as quickly or maybe quicker than if you did it with staff. You know, they're, they're still gonna do the same work. And they're gonna present all the stuff to staff, and then I look at it and do, do my work. Um, probably close, and I don't know if, if the fourteenth is even doable for them, but I'm just pointing out in terms of timeline, if. If time is of the essence, I don't think there'd be a significant difference between. Staff, um, staff reviewing these changes or you reviewing these changes. And then you would actually see them, of course, and also, um, Commissioner Bendel will be here as well, so that's another factor to consider.
Okay, well, that's good information, usually, um. It's faster for staff, but you've got your plate full, so that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, and, and just how quickly, you know, how quickly they can get it done too, you know, I, I don't know.
Right. So, um, the materials would have to be back in our hands by, um. What, March? What would be the requirement to have the materials back in your hands to distribute to us? Um, for such a, uh, continued hearing on March fourteenth?
Friday the tenth, so, so you, you receive the, the packet, you know, Friday the tenth. And, I mean, I, I would need to get it. Um, on, uh, on the seventh or so, and to look at it and make sure. Um. And then, and then you, you all would get it on the tenth, and the meeting would take place on the fourteenth.
Okay.
Roughly speaking, so. Fairly insignificant though, right, we're just talking about re-rendering it and.
Right.
Mapping some different.
So, Mr. Kenny, we might be able to do that and continue the hearing to another day.
That would make me more comfortable.
Yeah, okay. Um, now, the question is, can you guys do that?
Do I have a choice?
And then there's, there's also the. Uh, meeting on the twenty eighth, I, I personally won't be here on the twenty eighth, um, but. Perhaps I can coax one of my. Coworkers to.
I, I, I'm gonna wanna get this in as quickly as we can, because is, we're this close to building permit at this point. That I, I want to get through this so we can. Start the actual process so we can. Get the construction moving and get them open.
Good, okay, so, um. Given that, uh, perspective, that if we change this to a continued hearing. Then we would be talking about these changes to option B. We'd be talking about, um. Um. You know, getting the materials revised on the elevations, right, that, um. Would conform with the other commissioners' comments about where the core ten would be and the elevations of the materials on the east side. And we can develop, delve into that in a second, but then the other thing that we didn't talk about yet was signage. So, um, the, uh. Commissioners here have said that they'd like to see a smaller scale of sign on the interior courtyard side.
I don't, I don't care either way, I think it's on that side of the court.
Yeah, I, I think. It's just more consistent, we're not trying to track traffic level one oh one. Uh, and if you look at the other signs. On the mall side, like right even across the way, it's on the canopy, it's very small, I don't think it has to be a lot smaller, but I think just acknowledging that this is. Not a highway, it's not roads, it's pedestrian, so that's, that's all, and that's consistent with the guidelines.
Yeah, right now, the, uh, sign on both sides is twenty inches high. Um, the smaller sign on both sides is ten inches high. So, um, the signs are nowhere near what they could be. On either side, they could be larger. But, um, if there was a smaller sign. On the east, on the west side, that from the twenty inches. We've already got a ten inch sign, so what is that in your mind, is that a sixteen inch sign or something, you know, on the?
Something in that range, I, I leave it to the, to the client, the architect.
I mean, that's, that's why we set these things at, at twenty, um, I don't, I don't believe in over signageing a building to take away from the architecture. Because, I mean, we're dealing with a sign that's probably. Like that, I know what, we walked the center, we spent a good two and a half hours walking the center, looking at some of the other signs, sleep number, crate. Even on those sites, some of those things are, they're well over twenty-four inches tall. But we, we are not, we're, we're amendable to reducing that sign height to get to an agreeable marker to, so we're, we're all happy with what's going on, and.
It, it could be also the contrast, because the other signs are more, um, you know, applied on the white material. Or lighter material, so it doesn't have the perception of being tall, whereas, um, you are applying it on quartet, so it does. Appear much higher and thicker and bulkier.
Um, I'm personally with Jim, I don't have a problem with that sign, because I think it's up high, I think it's okay up there, so. Um, that's two of us that think it's okay, how do you guys feel about it?
I think I would go a little bit smaller, just to keep proportion on the other, on the courtyard side, I'm okay with the size on the, um, parking lot side.
Right.
Okay.
Slightly smaller.
Slightly smaller, okay.
Not much. You know, I don't.
I think small starts to.
Yeah, in a small, you know, yeah.
But we'll look at an eighteen inch, so it's proportional to the building and what we.
That's why I was asking about the, uh, the, uh. This, the width of the U, if it was the same, maybe you could proportionate to.
I think what's gonna help is when we raise that core ten up to delineate with the lower pieces, that's gonna give you more mass within that square, and it's gonna make it look, so.
I agree with you. Um, well, one thing, uh. Did you want them to come back with a, a, at least a list of. Drought resistant plants, or, you know, some, some sort of landscaping, uh?
I don't know that they'll be able to do that, but, um. Uh, that's what it should be. Should be drought resistant, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, I won't be able to turn that around that fast, but, um.
Right.
If we can make that contingent upon something that they need to come back with, we're, we're good with that, we're not gonna. Trust me, for what we're doing to this building, we're not gonna let the landscaping be.
Right. Okay.
Chair Chase, if I could interject, we could always add a condition of approval. That they need to submit a landscaping plan to be reviewed and approved by staff and could be tied to like a TCO.
Oh, that'd be great, good idea.
Okay. Good, so we could put that into, uh, the next meetings, uh.
Right, that's awesome.
Program, yeah, all right. Um, and lastly, but not least, is the, uh, query regarding lead, so, um. Nikki, you would, uh, be able to get some kind of response from, uh, ownership about this, uh, by that meeting, right? And, uh, a sort of a. Description of what you might be willing to do, is that fair to say?
Yes, I'll work with them as soon as I get back to see how far we can take it.
Okay. So, that would.
Yeah.
Probably be the best we can get out of this one, okay. Um, all right, so.
Chris, it might also, uh. Behoove us to know, like, it sounds like you're, you've kind of went above and beyond some of the Cal Green standards too, so if, if you. It happened that you came back and the leadership teams decided, it's a, it's a hard no. You know, if, if you could list some of the things that. Bring you above and beyond the Cal Green standards, that, that could. At least help, help us go in the right direction.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we have the whole Cal Green list filled out already, based, because we had to submit that per. For this day, plus our title twenty four.
Yeah. Well, you know how the numbers come at, at the bottom, and it's like, you know, we're over the, my percentage.
Um, so for clarity on the, uh, building, uh, frontage and exterior materials and all that stuff, Phil, can you bring up that, uh? Let's start with, uh, uh, what, the east elevation, it's, I think, the, uh, easier one to resolve quickly here.
Not option B, but. Elevation, which here.
They are considering that, yes, it's a. It's a, they, they, they don't have a plan. Um, okay, Phil, you don't have the option B in front of, uh. Yeah, I was, but, um, this is, I guess, adequate enough to consider it, it's easier to. On the, in courtyard side to relate to it, because that's important on the courtyard side. But, but this is fine for here, so, Jim, what you're saying is on the far left, and everybody's saying that that would be, um, this, uh. Right.
And that the composite.
That would become composite.
It'd be D, right.
D, yeah.
Oh, that's.
D is the composite, uh, material, E right, that's the core, so.
Second, the element, yes, D material, yes.
Right.
Gotcha.
Okay. So that would be the only, uh, material change we'd be talking on this elevation, correct? Is that everybody agree with it? Okay. Right. So then, when we go to the courtyard side. Okay. So, the upside down arches, uh, change in height. But, um, the materials are represented the same in the option B. So. Okay, what I'm hearing, uh, from the commissioners, it, is that behind our house would be the core ten, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Right, okay. And then to the left, on the panels. To the north of that. That would all become the. No, to the, uh, that's to the south, yeah, this would be the north, right? So.
That would become.
That would be all but to be composite, is that right?
No, no core ten, nor.
Daniel, Valerie, is that what you are, uh, agreeing with?
Yes, I think, I believe Mark, um, mentioned that perhaps the last member will receive quartet.
That one will receive quartet, because the sign is there, um, just agreeing with Mr. Rizzo, that we're, that's, we would do that to keep the consistency.
And then to the right of the entry doors there, on the two, uh, facades on the existing building.
Composite material. All composite.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, as, as well as about four eyes, it's, it's more eyes just showing as. About four eyes.
I think it's cluttered, not all right.
I, I believe that was ACM at that point, um, the way it's in shadow, but we will make all that composite. As discussed.
You guys think it would look better just as a quartet, like, just as. Whatever's on. Top of, uh, four eyes? I don't know, I think that, I think the composite's better, probably.
They both can work, I think.
I, I like the consistency of keeping the quarter ten with the signage is, as, as the. As a consensus, because it, it plays with the architecture at that point, the signs have quartz and everything else is just. All the wood material, wood look.
So do the wood look on the right too?
Yep.
Okay.
And great value engineering here for our house. Saving money.
Okay. Um, so. I think that covers it, right, that they'd come back with those elements.
Yeah.
For that meeting.
And, yeah, we're gonna reduce the size of the sign slightly.
Right, correct, and reduce the size of the sign, right?
Just one question, did we, did we get clarity on pedestrian access to the outside areas? Both east and west. Um, there was some discussion of providing pedestrian access to either one of those areas when the front doors are locked.
It'll be just during business hours.
Got it.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue?
Yes, we have to make a motion to continue this, this element, this item, so, um. What we would, yes, Jim, you're in charge of a motion.
Thanks, I'd see if I can.
I'd like to make a. A motion to continue in the matter of the major design review. Application for modifications to the existing retail space. Three thirteen within the quarter of the town center file. PL two two dash zero zero nine seven.
Okay, with, uh, the, uh, amendments that we've requested of the applicant. Yes. Yes, yeah, I'm just adding that um, the we've delineated those items for for you to come back to us with.
Also, just need to, the motion needs to contain that you're continuing to a date certain of March fourteenth, otherwise we need to send, we we need to re-notice it.
Uh, to a date.
Certain of March.
Of March fourteenth. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyshoyer.
Yes.
Chair Chase.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rizzo.
Yes.
Alright. I gotta thank you guys for contributing to this effort, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
Yeah.
We'll see you guys in a few weeks.
Yes.
So by the by the tenth, Phil, we have to ever end it back in your hands?
Yeah, the.
Days away from me.
I mean, you might. Seventh or eighth. I mean, it just.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I'll need to, I need, I'll need to list everything, you know, here's what they provided, and here's, the revised staff report will basically list everything that you've given.
Okay.
We'll we'll talk.
We might, we might have California weather for you next time you come.
This is like Ohio weather. Thank you all.
Alright, thank you.
Great. Okay, um, since we last had a meeting, um, I don't know that um, anybody other than Commissioner Bendel or did uh, yeah, went to a meeting on the twenty-first, and she's not here. So um, it's up to uh, staff to provide a uh, summary to the commissioners of what happened at that meeting.
Oh, I was at that meeting, um, there was a presentation by um, Marin County Sustainability Planner regarding ordinance, um, a model ordinance related to uh, banning single-use um, utensils, um, cups, plates, and foodware. Um, now it's discussed at great length, uh, many, many questions by council um, were asked and answered, um, council will give the direction to staff to get more information um, on what's town likes to do um, related to um, ban on single-use plastics, many members of the business community were also present um, to provide comments.
Okay, and no editorial comment from you about this, so.
Uh, none from me, I was uh, observing, it's a fantastic discussion, so we're looking forward to to more of the same.
As a quarter of a resident, she could be most impacted.
Yes. There would be some exemptions, not, there's not materials available for every single type of um, foodware container that are used by restaurants, um, as an example, an exemption would be hot um, containers to hold hot foods like soups, um, those still need to be lined with plastic and they're they're just not compostable um, at this time and there was a lot of debate over what exactly um, the county's um, composting contractor can actually handle. And what's contamination of of the stream, that sounds like there's a lot of that that's happening. Um, so if anyone has time, I'd really encourage you to listen to your discussions, it was great, great discussion.
Yeah.
Um, and then the change, the change to the planning and building department had its um, second reading at that meeting. Um, planning and building department would become community development department, um, Adam seeking a community development director um, in the near future, so we're looking forward to that, to that change.
And then PCM?
Or the the total wine, um, applicant had an item on consent, um, as is our practice, um, when alcoholic beverage control requires the town council to make a determination of public convenience or necessity, and the reason for that is when they serve their tastings at the store, um, that's in the same category as a tavern or pub, and as you know, in this sentence tract, sentence tract, there's an awful lot of taverns and pub type of restaurants, almost all of them um, of the similar license category are our restaurants in Corder Madera, so the PCM was necessary for total wine. Uh, for that reason, and and that was on uh, the consent calendar, um, so they'll be working with ABC to dot their i's across their t's related to um, their alcohol license going forward.
Well, they've got a construction fence up in front of the store there.
Yeah, they um, are working on demolition of the existing spaces, um, followed by some of the facade work. They don't have their tenant improvement permit yet, um, they have some uh, impact fees to pay.
Okay. Interesting, alright. So then, does planning staff have any other reports to give us, you know, about anything coming up?
Well, we were gonna announce that the next meeting was likely gonna be canceled, but now it will not be, so.
Okay, good. Alright, um.
Right, and just just to clarify that, on your agenda, it says next meeting is one oh six Walnut, which you saw as a prelim several months ago. They are not ready, so it will not be one oh six Walnut, it will be our house again on the fourteenth.
Okay. Alright, um, no other issues for us to talk about, the only thing we have to do is approve the meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So move.
Okay, second. She's recused, she can't vote.
Okay, gotcha. Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so at the early hour of nine o'clock, let's adjourn this. Thank you.